Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call the City Council Meeting of May 1st, 2017, to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the right, my United States is to the left. And we are proud of our citizens, citizens of one nation, under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice for all.
And please let the record note that all council members are present. We have minutes from the meeting of April 24th. They'll stand approved unless there's objection. Seeing none, we'll move on to our schedule of committee meetings.
Thanks. Happy May Day, everybody. Public Safety and Health Committee will meet this coming Wednesday, the 3rd of May, between 5:00, excuse me, 8:30 in the morning and 9:35, 8:35 in the morning and 9:35. Administration and Finance Committee will follow from 9:40 to 11:10. Public Works meets from 11:15 to noon. And the Land Use and Committee, I cannot speak tonight. The Land Use and Planning Committee will meet from 1 o'clock to 2:30. And all of those meetings are being held this coming Wednesday here in the council chambers at 140 West Pine. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to the committee's schedule this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on our agenda this evening. Any general public comment?
Candy Matthew Jenkins, I'm happy to see other people having trouble speaking. I'm still reading from "The Soviet Art of Brainwashing: Psycho-Politics, the Art of Mental Healing." The stimulus written, given to the House on American Activities between 1936 and 1939. The stimulus response mechanisms of the body are such that the pain and the command subdivide so as to counter each other. The mental image picture of the punishment will not become effective on the individual unless the command content is disobeyed. It is pointed out in many early Russian writings that this is a survival mechanism. It has, has already been well and thoroughly used in the survival of communism. It is only necessary to deliver into the organism a sufficient stimulus as to gain an adequate response. So long as the organism obeys the stimulus, whenever it is restimulated in the future, it does not suffer from the pain of the stimulus. But should it disobey the command, the content of the stimulus, the stimulus reacts to punish the individual. Thus, we have an optimum circumstance and one of the basic principles of psycho-politics, a sufficiently installed stimulus that will thereafter remain as a police mechanism within the individual to cause him to follow the commands and directions given to him.
Any other general public comments this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Items on that agenda were approved unanimously in city council committees, and we save a little time on Monday evenings by considering these items all at once. Pardon me. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items allowed, so those in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and we'll take comment before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
Thanks. Tonight's consent agenda has three items, and it's my understanding that number three we might vote on a little bit later in the meeting. Number one, as always, is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable in the amount of $492,278.80 for checks that are dated May 2nd, 2017. Number two is to grant an amended easement across portions of Kiwanis Park for the purpose of extending underground power services for the Lambres Fair and Apartments LLC project. And number three, this is the one I think we're going to delay until later in the meeting because we have the budget amendment that funds this contract award on as a public hearing this evening. So number three is to award the bid for project number 13-021B, the Karis Park Outfalls Stormwater Pretreatment retrofit to Battle Ridge Builders for a base bid of $173,300 and the alternate of $34,500 for a total of $207,800 and authorize the return of bid bonds.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Without objection, we'll move item number three to committee reports so that we can handle business in order this evening. All right. With that, anyone care to comment on items one and two of the consent agenda this evening? Questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, items number one and two, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Bentley. Bentley votes yes. Kares.
Yes.
Kares votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Hetal. Hetal votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Marler. Marler votes yes. Sweeney. Sweeney votes yes. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. And Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 12 ayes.
And the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum. We do have a community forum report this evening. Mr. Gennard.
So, is the volume good here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So at our last community forum report, we had some, two presentations, one for design excellence by Tom Zavitz, who works for the city of Missoula. He has a public comment in public invitation open for, at Tuesday, tomorrow, the 2nd of May, from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Holiday Inn Downtown. If you are interested in public, in giving your input on historical preservation of the town, design standards, or the general look of Missoula, it is encouraged to show up there. And our next presentation was from Robin Nielsen, from the Missoula City Health Department, or Missoula City and County Health Department. And we're starting to work with her and a few of the neighborhoods for just giving our general input for what we'd like to see in the public health area, so that they can start working on grants with a few other agencies as well. And this is a group of many health-minded organizations working together in order to forward these goals. And we did also confirm three leaders of, or three members of the leadership team. And then after the meeting, we had a presentation of how bricks were made in the early Missoula days by Doug Grimm. And he ended up bringing a brick from the old Wilma and going off on his, one of his old stories, so. And another thing that wasn't on the agenda, but the Office of Neighborhoods put on, was the bus tour. I know Heidi was there, Gwen was there, Gwen's lunchbox was there, or somewhere else. Jordan was there. I want to say there was at least one other Ruth, I believe, was there. But that was a great experience for us, and we really appreciate Jane putting that on and going through all the coordination there. And learned a whole lot about all of the other neighborhoods that you don't get to go out and see, so we appreciate it.
Patrick, may I have you identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm Patrick Gennard. I'm on the River Road Neighborhood Leadership Team.
Thank you, sir. With that, we will move on to special presentations. We have three of those this evening in the form of proclamations. Pardon me. First, whereas Missoula Community Access Television is Missoula's community media resource, and whereas MCAT services help Missoulaans become more educated and engaged about what's happening in the community, and whereas MCAT provides free media equipment rentals, training, and educational programs for the public and Missoula's youth, and whereas this Friday, MCAT is celebrating, count 'em, 27 years of providing the community with access to media technology, local public programming, media education, and government programming, and whereas MCAT is looking forward to and preparing for at least another 27 years as Missoula's community media resource. Now therefore, I, John Inge and Mayor of the city of Missoula, in the state of Montana, do hereby recognize the 5th day of May, Cinco de Mayo, as it turns out, 2017, as MCAT Day. I think we're going to hear something about MCAT.
You are. Hello. I'm Kay Rabel. I'm president of the Board of MCAT. And on behalf of the Board and the staff of MCAT, we thank you very much for recognizing the work that we do. We're very proud to be Missoula's community media resource. We have a party going on Friday downtown at the Downtown Dance Collective from 5:00 to 8:00, a little program at 6:00, and we'd love to invite you all to come and party with us and help us begin the next chapter of the life at MCAT. Thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, and thanks for the good work.
Thank you.
Next, ladies and gentlemen, whereas asthma has reached epidemic proportions in the United States, affecting an estimated 25.9 million people nationwide, including 85,000 Montanans, and whereas asthma is one of the leading causes of childhood hospitalizations, long-term illness, and school absenteeism, and whereas exposure to allergens and irritants such as wildfire smoke can bring on an asthma episode, and whereas each year nearly 2 million people are rushed to the emergency room with asthma, accounting for 1,876 emergency room visits and 524 hospital stays in Montana per year, and whereas the cost of asthma is more than $56 billion annually, with typical hos, with a typical hospital stay in Montana costing $10,989, and 2 in 10 adults in Montana with asthma are unable to fill an asthma prescription due to cost. Now therefore, I, John Inge and Mayor of the city of Missoula, in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the month of May 2017 as Asthma Awareness Month.
Thank you so much. I'm Marcy Baumann. I'm with the American Lung Association in Montana. We would like to promote a World Asthma Day event that we are hosting tomorrow in partnership with the Missoula Urban Indian Health Center, as well as the University of Montana School of Pharmacy's IFARM program, the Improving Public Health Among Rural Montanans. At City Life Community Center, we're having a family-friendly event celebrating World Asthma Day, sharing all the resources that families with children with asthma have in the community. So thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening. And finally, ladies and gentlemen, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas mental illnesses impact not just individuals and families, but entire communities, and whereas with effective treatment, persons with persistent mental health issues can recover and live full, productive lives, and whereas public awareness and civic education are the best ways to promote treatment and the provision of adequate resources, now therefore, I, John Inge and Mayor of the city of Missoula, in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the month of May 2017 as Mental Health Month. And those are our proclamations this evening. We will now move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment on a variety of issues, and following a staff report on each of these items, the council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing, unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. Our first public hearing this evening is on a conditional use request at 612 Plymouth Street, an accessory dwelling unit request. And with our staff report this evening is Ms. Baker.
Good evening, everyone. This is Jenny Baker with Development Services. As you know, we usually have a presentation to show you. We won't this evening because evidently the computer has died. So I will try to go through and talk about some of the things that we usually address, and if I don't cover something, we will have questions, but I hope it will be adequate for you to vote. So the request is from Kevin Dorr and Lisa Pacheco, who are here this evening. It's for 612 Plymouth Street, which is the slant streets. It's near Mount Avenue, and it's two blocks west of Higgins. They are asking for a conditional use approval in order to construct a new garage at the rear of the property and to incorporate a 598-square-foot ADU as the second story of the garage. We always look at the growth policy, and that for the neighborhood, which is Missoula's Ward 3, and the Rose Park neighborhood, has a recommended density of medium, which is 3 to 11 dwelling units per acre in the area. The zoning is R5.4, which is a single, single-dwelling residential district. That is why we're having the conditional use requests. The property around it is also typically, is also primarily R5.4, and then over towards Higgins, there is a business district. If we could see the site plan, it would have the house at the front facing Plymouth, and then at the back, there is an old garage that will be taken down and replaced with the new structure. When we look at these requests, we see if they meet the zoning regulations by checking the setbacks. This will meet the setbacks. It has six feet from the alley to the structure, and on the sides, it has to have at least five. It has six feet and 17 feet, so it's okay in terms of that. As for the height, it must be shorter than the house, and it can't be over 22 feet. The primary house is 22 feet, and this structure is proposed at 21 feet 9 and 7/8 inches. So it also meets that. It has to have three parking spaces. There are two in the garage, and beside the garage, there is a third space, which is a paved parking pad. All of those will meet the regulations as well. It can't be more than 600 feet. Has to be between 350 and 600. This proposal is 598 square feet. There will be alley paving that is part of this. It is one house in from the corner. The alley is paved on the corner parcel, and so the applicant will pave the part of the alley that's just in front of their parcel. There are already sidewalks, curb, and gutter at the front, so that is taken care of. When we look at the review criteria, we assess it in terms of the zoning regulations. As discussed, it meets the regulations that we have. We look at for a conditional use if the building is compatible in scale and design with the other structures surrounding it, and in keeping with the residential character of the neighborhood. This is compatible in terms of residential use, and it will be similar to the existing structure, as well as the other residential structures around it. Whether the proposed residential use is the same, sorry, that's repetition, it is. And we also look at traffic safety. This project should generate minimal additional traffic in the neighborhood, and it shouldn't pose any inconvenience or detriment to existing traffic in this area. On the basis of these criteria, we recommend that council approves this accessory dwelling unit conditional use request at 612 Plymouth. If you have questions, I will be happy to try to answer them, and the owners are also here this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. With that, I will open the public hearing. Any public comment on this proposed accessory dwelling unit? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council this evening? Seeing none, Mr. DeBary.
I move approval of the conditional use request for a detached accessory dwelling unit at 612 Plymouth Street in the R5.4 zoning district in accordance with the city's zoning ordinance, Title 20, Section 20.05.020, 20.45.060, and 20.85.070, based on the findings of fact in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval.
That, pardon me, that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Wilkins?
So it kind of got me. When you were reading this, you, and it said 5.4, which is a single-family residence, dwellings, I think you said? There you go. That's my objection to it. It's single-family dwellings. When you're putting an ADU on that same property, you're not, it's not single-family dwellings anymore. It's double. It's multi. So, and doing it under a conditional use, there are no other conditional uses on our books that actually add another dwelling place to a property. So there's no way I can support this. I don't think it's right. And I think it's degrading our single-family neighborhoods. You've got tourist homes, you've got other things that are happening in there, and they just keep degrading and degrading. So I think single-family is also very important. I think a lot of people like the single-family, and I wish we could keep it intact.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve the conditional use, Bentley. Bentley votes yes. Kares. Kares votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Hetal. Hetal votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Marler. Marler votes yes. Sweeney. Sweeney votes yes. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Wilkins. Wilkins votes no. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 11 ayes and one nay.
And the conditional use is approved. Our second public hearing this evening is on a resolution amending the Parking Commission fiscal year 2017 budget. Mr. Austin, do you have our staff report this evening?
Rod Austin, Director of the Missoula Parking Commission. We're requesting this amendment to hire a consultant to help us assess and write an RFP to purchase gating equipment for, first of all and primarily, the new student housing project. It turns out there, the TIF funding that was projected to be available to complete that project, and in order for that, the level of public parking in that project to work with our systems, we felt that the Parking Commission would step up and pay for that portion of that structure. We're in line, once it's purchased back from the developer, to own and operate that as a public unit. And with that opportunity, I, we, we've had a lot of issues with some of the gating equipment that we've had. Some of it's old, old, old. The company that we purchased all of it from is no longer in existence. It was purchased by 3M, and not long after they absconded with a proprietary piece of software, they shut the business down. So it's not supported anymore. And we've had maintenance issues with even some of the newer equipment, and didn't realize that it probably should have been replaced before that company went out of business. So all of our gating equipment and all of our structures would be changed through this. The technology that's involved in this type of equipment anymore, it's not just arms going up and down, it's how they interface with the public, how they interface with the systems we have in place, are all critical, and we do not have that kind of expertise in, within the Parking Commission at this point in time. I know I don't, I'm a finance guy, and I actually took a trip to look at some of this very same equipment for that reason, and it convinced me that we needed to go outside of our expertise to do that. We have sufficient funding to cover this consultant, and I'll answer any questions you have from there.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this budget amendment? With that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council? Mr. Wilkins?
So this money's coming from the Parking Commission's money?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So the question I have, I guess, you know, I, I just hate hiring people to do study after study in Missoula, and I think sometimes we overdo that. So you're going to have people come in, and they're going to install these things. Don't they give you advice how to operate them, and this type of thing?
Depending on the company.
And give you a warranty?
Yep. Depending on the company we actually do business with ultimately, there are a number of companies out there that provide this kind of equipment, and there'll be some competition to bring that equipment here. And this consultant will not only help us write an RFP to do that properly, but he'll also help us get through that and assess the companies that want to try to do business with us.
Okay.
And we're getting ready to spend a pretty considerable sum of money on the equipment and the installation itself, and we need to do it right.
Further questions? Mr. Von Losberg?
Thanks. I wanted to kind of expand on Mr. Wilkins' question. Can you just confirm, Rod, that when you mentioned there's sufficient funding within the parking structure, Parking Commission, that can be a confusing entity for folks? So can you just confirm for the audience, that's not something that comes from the general fund? It's discreetly within your Parking Commission budget?
That's correct. Parking Commission, I don't know of a way that the Parking Commission has, utilizes any general fund money for any of our operations. We operate completely internally to do all the things that we need to do.
Further questions? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Kares?
I was so nervous there. I move that we adopt a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the city of Missoula, Montana, as set forth in the fiscal year 2017 budget, that increases the total Parking Commission budget by $48,000, and the appropriate Parking Commission fund in the amount of $48,000, in order to hire a parking consultant to analyze current facilities and prepare requests for proposals in order to upgrade the current gating equipment in Central Park, Park Place, and Karis Park, as well as purchase new gate arm equipment to be installed in the student housing project.
That motion is in order? Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Wilkins?
So I have a person that emailed me, and I just have to say, Mary, this is coming from the Parking Commission. It's not coming from the city. The Parking Mission, Commission generates its own money, and they feel like this study, they're going to pay a lot of money for this equipment. They feel like this study is necessary, and because I think Rod Austin does us a good job, I am going to support this.
Mr. Von Losberg?
John, Mr. Wilkins kind of took my comments right out of my mouth. I spoke with a constituent as well this morning, who had some confusion about this, based on some reporting about it, and just wanted to confirm that same thing. This is not money that we are adding to the budget mid-year. This is coming from the operational budget of the Parking Commission. There's no change to tax rates or anything like that associated with this. The Parking Commission is a component unit within the overall city budget, and its revenues are primarily leases and fines, I believe. So I just wanted to make the same clarification, and I'll be supporting this as well.
Ms. West?
I will also be supporting this. I parked in the new parking structure a few weeks ago, because the first tower's always free, and the parking, the, the arms weren't working, and they're obviously in need of upgrade. And this, you know, to reiterate what everyone else has said, is something that is funded internally and is definitely needed.
Mr. House?
I was going to add to that. I think it's Federal APD is the company that used to make the parking arms, and as, as Mr. Austin mentioned, they are no longer going concern. And the, the gates malfunction frequently enough, it's my understanding, that, that oftentimes they're just up, and so there's revenue lost from that, from that opportunity. Parking, I don't generally subscribe to the idea of government as business. I think that we're in the service-providing world, but, but parking is an enterprise that is managed in a, in a very specific business-like way, and Rod has a real acumen for that. So I, I trust that this process will, will yield equipment that will work better for our, the function of our downtown parking structures, and enable us to do some other exciting things, like real-time monitoring of a lot of occupancy and, and other innovations.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
Okay. On the motion to adopt the resolution and approve the budget amendment, Kares. Kares votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Hetal. Hetal votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Marler. Marler votes yes. Sweeney. Sweeney votes yes. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. And Bentley. Bentley votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That's 12 ayes.
And the motion is approved. Next is a public hearing on a resolution amending the fiscal year 2017 budget for the Clark Fork Lane and Karis Park outfall. And our staff report this evening is Mr. Slovarp.
Good evening. Kevin Slovarp, city engineer with Development Services. So the, the amendment to the, the budget is essentially for two projects, Clark Fork Lane Rotary Construction, or actually Road Construction Project. It's to fill an agreement that we had with the property owner that It's to fill an agreement that we had with the property owner that annexed some years ago, we agreed to build some base road elements. The budget amendment is actually to spend this money in fiscal year 17. As the developer of that property wanted to get going sooner than we anticipated, the budget was originally approved, the money was originally approved in the fiscal year 2018 budget. The next project is the Caris Park Outfall, it's a stormwater project. It's a, it's a project that you approved earlier tonight for construction. It is to move the funds into the stormwater budget and have some of those funds pay for that improvement. There's some other funding sources that are, that have been received. There's been a DNRC grant which makes up the bulk of it, there's Parking Commission money, MRA money in that project. So be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Slovar. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on these budget amendments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Seeing none, Ms. Kares?
I move we adopt a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the City of Missoula, Montana as set forth in the fiscal year 2017 budget that increases the total city budget by $250,000 in order to construct and provide construction engineering services on the Clark Fork Lane roadway construction project and transferring appropriations within and among expenditure classes totaling $392,000 for the fiscal year 2017 budget.
Pardon me, that motion is in order? Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution to amend the budget for construction engineering services, DeBari. DeBari votes yes, Hetal. Hetal votes yes, Hess. Hess votes yes, Jones. Jones votes yes, Marler. Marler votes yes, Swainy. Swainy votes yes, Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes, West. West votes yes, Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes, Bentley. Bentley votes yes, and Kares. Kares votes yes, would any of you like to change your vote? That is 12 ayes.
Pardon me, and the motion is approved. We have no more public hearings, I'll pass on communications from the mayor, we'll begin general comments from council members with Mr. Von Losberg.
I just wanted to quickly thank, well, back up a moment and say, it was a spectacular day in Missoula on Friday for other news, but on Saturday with the opening of the bridge over Reserve Street and the first stage of Fort Missoula Regional Park. Had the pleasure of biking down all the way from our home in the north side down to the Fort Park and I just wanted to quickly thank everybody who helped bring that to fruition and specifically John O'Connor for the work he did with the bond and Neil Minor from Parks for his project management work.
Ms. Hetal? Mr. DeBari?
I would just like to go ahead and remind folks, as Mr. Gennard did a little bit earlier, that tomorrow night is the kickoff meeting for the Design Excellence Workshop. It's taking place from 5:30 until 8:00 at the Holiday Inn Downtown and it's your opportunity to come and learn a little bit about the process and to weigh in on your thoughts regarding design excellence in the downtown and along the major commercial arterials in Missoula. So it's your opportunity to help shape the form and function of our city and we'll look forward to seeing you there.
Ms. Marler?
It's my understanding that Ms. Bentley wants to be added to LUP, so I would like that to happen. Thanks.
Ms. Armstrong? Mr. Wilkins has gone missing. Ms. Kares? Mr. Hess? Ms. Jones?
I wanted to just add on to what Brian said, I was also out at Fort Missoula this weekend for the grand opening and it just is such an asset, I think, for our community. It's gonna be a huge economic driver and a wonderful thing to use out there. And I wanted to specifically thank Donna Gawcler, Becky Goodrich, Neil Minor, Garrick Swenson and Nikki Perez. I know this was years and years of work and Missoula is very grateful. Thank you.
Ms. West?
I also had a fabulous time, we did at the bridge opening, so we should probably ask, thank Ellen and the MRA as well, they haven't been added to the list yet. We rode 10 miles this weekend, my kids and I, all the way back and then back to the north side. One thing to mention is that the Mountain Line is doing their strategic plan right now and there's an opportunity to take an online survey until, what's the end date? May 19th. So if you wanna give your input on the future of how Mountain Line interacts with our community, that, go, go do it. Thanks.
Ms. Bentley? And Ms. Swainy?
I wanted to acknowledge a few of our students at the University of Montana who are receiving Student Diversity Leadership Awards and so that's Roberta Arno, Mateen Hasami, Jennifer Harrington and Lauren Rodriguez Small, as well as Ronaldo Sosi. And then I wanted to wish Dr. Fred Allendorf a happy belated 70th birthday.
With that, we'll move on to our committee reports. These items were not approved unanimously in council committees and the chair of each of those committees will make a motion reflecting that committee's action and we'll invite comment on these items before we vote as well. And first is, pardon me, the third item from the consent agenda, Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we award the bid for project 13-021B, Caris Park Outfall Stormwater Pretreatment retrofit to Battle Ridge Builders for the base bid of $173,300 and the bid alternate of $34,500 for a total of $207,800 and authorize the return of bid bonds. And I'd like to speak to the motion.
Mr. Hess?
This is an exciting project that will clean up a large outfall or the water quality of stormwater that is discharged into the Clark Fork River, currently draining, I think it's about 80 acres or so, of 62 acres maybe, some, some number of acres in downtown Missoula. But the, the treatment project will remove debris and trash and oil and grease and cigarette butts and the like from being discharged into the Clark Fork River, which is a very good thing.
With that, is there further discussion on the motion? Mr. Von Losberg?
Just gonna quickly add that that outflow, outflow, outfall is right proximate to Brendan's Wave area, so it's great to get this done.
Mr. Wilkins?
So I just wanna say, you know, everything each of us can do to clean that river up is a step towards making it better and better for our future people. And I think this is an important thing to get that stormwater not going into the, the river rottin', all the cigarette butts and the heavy metal and everything else, the antifreeze and stuff that drips out of cars, so I am proud to support this.
Further discussion? Seeing none, anyone in the audience care to comment? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution, is it resolution? Yes, for the Caris Park Outfall. Hetal. Hetal votes yes, Hess. Hess votes yes, Jones. Jones votes yes, Marler. Marler votes yes, Swainy. Swainy votes yes, Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes, West. West votes yes, Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes, Bentley. Bentley votes yes, Kares. Kares votes yes, and DeBari. DeBari votes yes, would any of you like to change your vote? It's 12 ayes.
And the motion is approved. Mr. Hess?
Thanks, I move we adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council to determine and declare a reasonable and safe prima facie speed limit of 25 miles per hour on the portion of Russell Street between Ernest Avenue and McDonald Avenue on school days between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM and I'd like to speak to that as well.
Mr. Hess?
This process, I think, has, has led to a good resolution to the Russell Street speed limit issue. I know that I differ with Mr. Wilkins on this, I appreciate where you're coming from, John. I think, I think that slowing speeds in the neighborhood is a noble objective. I think that at the advice of our city engineer, we'll get better compliance by doing that at times when it's more targeted. So I, I support this proposal to set the speed limit at 25 during school times and continue to study the issue and see what kind of compliance we get and see if there are future modifications necessary.
Pardon me, further discussion? Ms. Jones?
It's very awkward tonight, we have a bad mess of courts here. But I wanted to speak to this briefly, I appreciated the city engineer taking another stab at this and getting more information from the principal. And I too understand Mr. Wilkins' position on this and that the neighborhood wanted it 24/7, but my understanding from listening to the city engineer and working through the problem was when a lower speed limit is posted on a section of the road 24/7, it basically dilute, it dilutes it so that people ignore it after a while and you're not getting necessarily the objective that you're trying to get, which is to get people to go slower in that area. And given the nature of the fact that there is a big residential section on the west side of Russell and on the east side of Russell, you have school, YMCA, parks, Little League Fields, there's a lot of interaction. So I think by talking to the principal at Russell School and extending the hour so that it's about a, an 11-hour-plus chunk of time, yet still targeted, there's gonna be better compliance, which is gonna equate to lower speed limits when the kids are crossing and that's safer for those kids. So I think everyone was listening and we're trying to get to that objective and that's what the city engineer got to, so I appreciate that and I'm in favor.
Further discussion? Mr. Wilkins?
So I appreciate all you said. I understand what Mr. Wilkins was talking about, but I'm not sure you really do. You know, this came up at the neighborhood council there, every one of them wanted to keep that speed limit at 24/7. 20-plus years ago, they put a stoplight in there so the kids could press the button and the light would stop, or the light would turn red and cars would stop. And that seemed to be sufficient for years and never heard of any problems. I appreciate that you're gonna have bubble lights there during school time, I think that's, can be important too, I'm not against that part of it. The part that I'm against is you have summer, you have Little League Fields in back of that school, that school feeds kids all summer long, so you still have kids going back and forth, then bouncing lights aren't gonna be running then. So, you know, I dare say, you put the speed limit up to 35 and then you knock it to 25 during school hours and I'll bet you if you do another study on speed on that road, you'll find just as many people not adhering to that speed, the same way they didn't adhere to the speed the one that was 25, 24/7. Though a lot of people that went down that street knew that that was 24/7 and respected that and watched out for kids. You know, even though all the bubble lights are good and all that, I think this whole thing was made because some engineer in Helena said some engineer in the county that made some engineer in our city, they, God, we gotta do something about this. And that's what they did, that's the way this whole thing come and nobody's really using common sense in the whole thing. So I'm not gonna support it.
Further discussion? Mr. DeBari?
As Mr. Slovarp has indicated, the data indicates that the predominant behavior of drivers on that stretch of Russell Street is that they're speeding. And so in an effort to try to improve safety for at least a portion of the day, we've struck upon an opportunity to install some infrastructure, put up some signing, work with the police department to help inform enforcement and see how, how behavior changes as a result of these activities. Obviously, it's, you know, it's, a cha, there's a chance that this might not work, as Mr. Wilkins has indicated, but there's also a chance that it will and, and obviously if we keep doing things the same way, then there's no chance that it's going to change. So I'm supportive of the effort that Mr. Slovarp and others have put into this. I think we'll follow up over time and see how behavior has changed or hasn't changed and we'll be adaptive in the way we try to manage the speeds on, on that stretch of, of the street. Unlike many other schools in Missoula, there is a stoplight, as Mr. Wilkins has indicated, and that is the primary benefit of providing a dedicated crosswalk where traffic stops for people who use that, that light system in that crosswalk 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. So I am willing to give this a try and see how behavior changes over time and if it doesn't change, then I'll be supportive of trying something different.
Ms. West?
So I'm going to support it. I think that this is a good compromise from where we started, but I do hope that we maybe observe what happens this summer, especially during lunch hours to see, you know, if there maybe is some, you know, enough traffic, pedestrian traffic, children crossing the street, trying to get to the lunch site to maybe warrant having reduced speed limit, you know, at breakfast time and at lunchtime. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Wilkins?
So I gotta correct two things. Come on, I compromised, there was no compromise there, it was either the engineer's way or no way. So that's not compromising. Mr. DeBari, I don't think I heard the engineer said there was a majority of people speeding down that road. I actually don't remember, I know he said there was some, but I don't remember if he actually gave a figure, a third or a half or whatever, I didn't hear that, so. Anyway, that's still sticking to my guns in that one.
Further discussion? Anyone in the audience care to comment? With that, we will have a roll call vote on the resolution.
Okay, on the resolution, Hess. Hess votes yes, Jones. Jones votes yes, Marler. Marler votes yes, Swainy. Swainy votes yes, Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes, West. West votes yes, Wilkins. Wilkins votes no, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes, Bentley. Bentley votes yes, Kares. Kares votes yes, DeBari. DeBari votes yes, Hetal. Hetal votes yes, would any of you like to change your vote? That is 11 ayes and one nay.
And the resolution is approved. We have no additional committee reports this evening. We have one item of new business, that's the legislative update. It's over. You all have the report, John McDonald will be in town tomorrow, I'll get a briefing from him, we'll have him come back and give you all a legislative recap at some point. Any items of discussion this evening? Ms. Armstrong?
I forgot one thing, Missoula gives, starts at 6:00 PM on the 4th and ends at 6:00 PM on the 5th and you can go to missoulagives.org and all of our nonprofits will have sites up there and it's a, they try to raise $300,000 in 24 hours.
Anything under the new business category?
I, I have a small legislative update that has nothing to do with any bills that we were tracking, but we now have a definition of community land trust in state law, which is exciting.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kares?
I'll just read a part of a sentence that was shared in the final report from the lobbyist because it is so recent, having finished on Saturday. He says, "It was a generally productive session for local governments that included passage of a heavily amended gas tax to pay for road and bridge work and successful efforts to feed more than a dozen harmful TIF bills." And as many of you have heard, the infrastructure bills did not get passed. So I just wanted to share those pieces publicly and thank the lobbyist for his work.
Earlier this year, the Missoula City Council passed a jail diversion plan and one of the, the plan called for sentencing reform at the state level for nonviolent offenders and I wanted to thank
and I wanted to thank the Missoula Legislative Delegation, in particular Senator Cynthia Wilkin, who chaired the sentencing commission and helped us with our master plan for her successful leadership in that effort. And I hope that it, I'm hopeful that it will impact city residents and as, as we pay taxes to the county in overcrowding of our jail.
I will note, Mr. Bickle has just done a quick review, House Bill 473, that's the fuel tax legislation, which was a good piece of business for municipalities and counties. In Missoula, we can expect about $950,000 in new money from that, from that legislative change, which is good news. And Mr. Bickle estimates that we'll have another 1.5 million ongoing in new revenue that we can devote to street projects, so that was good news. Mr. Hess?
Is that revenue city-specific or for the county or?
Looks like it's to us.
Thanks.
All right, with that, are there any additional items we referred this evening? Seeing none, any miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports, or announcements? Seeing none of those, as always, I thank you for your service. I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry, is there anything of concern on the administrative report? All right, with that then, ladies and gentlemen, as always, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.